And other staff, every department head's had input on it to try to make it the best that it can be for the city and our employees. So, a lot of hard work, several years' worth of work has gone into that, but they have labored over that a good while to get the best product that we could.
All right, next item is authorized mayor to execute an agreement with All In Credit Union regarding their annual car sale. No changes here, right? We're just doing what we always do.
Yes, sir. No, no changes.
So that's April 24th through 26th. We've obviously right out here where we've been having it for several years now. Any questions on that? All right, next item is authorized police chief to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Flock Group. This is on behalf of Enterprise Housing Authority.
I can talk to chief about it. So, chief, chief, talk to me about it because I know that several on the council have had concerns about these cameras in the past. This is not something that the City of Enterprise is purchasing. This is through the Enterprise Housing Authority. This would give our police department access to the data collected on those cameras.
It's just on their property, right?
Just, just on their property, yes, sir.
Yep. That's something that they want to do and they're putting it on their-
That's correct. And we have several subdivisions in town that have decided to buy those on their own. And we've also had, I think in private state community colleges bought some of those cameras in the past.
Any questions or concerns about, about this? Okay. Review and consider proposal recommendations for the ETC community survey. So, this is something that we asked for in our annual planning meeting, right?
Yes, sir. And at the last council meeting, I believe you all received a copy of the proposal from the ETC group. I think we talked about, you know, that was not something that we budgeted, but certainly if you would like us to move forward, we would-
This is the same, same company that did it for us?
Same company that did it for us back in, I think it was 2017.
Yeah, we did it for a couple of years. So, it's probably a good, good time to revisit this. Okay. What would the schedule on that be?
I'd have to get Emily to come up and tell you.
You can get back with us if you don't know exactly.
Yes, sir. So, if I understand this correctly, the projected schedule in the first month, we would work with the company to design the survey and go over the sampling plan. Months two and three would be administering the survey, and then month four would be analyzing the data and preparing the final report to get to you. So, it should be completed all within a six-month timeframe.
Right. So, probably July, August, actually maybe September, October, somewhere. But ahead of the next, the next term, then the, you know, we'll have that information.
Yeah. So, assuming the next term, election in August, next term takes office in November. So, you should, whoever is serving should have the-
Should have that information. Perfect. All right, any other questions on the ETC Institute survey? Next item is the request permission to seek bids for the equipment and labor at the pedestrians crosswalks down on Main Street, labor and, and equipment. Barry?
Yes, sir. So, Main Street secured a grant to add the crosswalk buttons at each one of the existing crosswalks on Main Street. I believe there's five of them, approximately five of them. So, anywhere that we have a crosswalk painted on the ground and there is a signalized intersection there, this would be to put a crosswalk button there. Talking to ALDOT, what they recommended to get this on the timeline is for the city to go out for bids and do this. They would give me the equipment that they would specify, and we would go through the permitting process with them since it is an ALDOT road. But we would, we would bid the project and with their permission and then do permitting through them and install the buttons, and then they would also go back and adjust the timing on Main Street if it so required. But what they're telling us is the new, the new buttons would have the audible. So, when you hit the button, people would know that the button's hit. It'll be state-of-the-art, you know, current of what's on the market now. So, we're doing that for the crosswalk buttons and also the possibility of adding another crosswalk, hatch, ladder pattern across the road down near the farmer's market if ALDOT will allow us to permit that as well. So, I'm asking permission to go to bid for both of those.
All right.
Barry, does that also include those signs? You see, we've got a couple of them that shows people. So, when the cars turn especially left off of Leon to Main, you know, it's a little block there if you're in a turning lane to see people. Because I almost got hit once and a couple of other people. Now, we have that gaming room there. A lot of young folks are coming from Yancey Parkers parking area out there and coming across, and it's really tight.
There's two separate projects that we looked at there, Councilman, that one, the one that I'm talking about now is just doing the buttons to get people across, but we've also moving forward with getting permitted a bump-out area there. So, we have an island with some grasses or vegetation of some type through that. We're working through that process with ALDOT as well. So, that would help. One of the discussions in that is whether or not to bring the bump-outs out so that the pedestrian can get closer, so that the lane of traffic crossing will be shorter versus the longer. And we're not 100% through with that design as well on that project.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the crosswalks? Now, how much was the grant for and how much do we expect?
I believe it was $25,000 for the grant.
Is that going to cover everything or are we going to have to-
That should cover everything, sir.
Okay, good. All right, next item are some streetlight requests. Looks like some routine requests here, one on at 3544 Ozark Highway, which I believe is out towards Shellfield Road, that intersection, and then West Bronson Street and North Main.
Yes, sir. These are just standard lighting contracts. We were requested to look at those. They were dark intersections. We agreed that a light there would make sense. So, we're bringing them to you for approval to add that to our contract.
All right. Any questions or concerns about those lights? Then we've got our EAA Young Eagle Flight Rally, which I believe is something we do every year.
Yes, sir. So, this is a reoccurring event that the EAA chapter puts on where they take young eagles and take children up and expose them to general aviation flight. So, this is something that, that we normally do at the airport. This would be, they did submit in an insurance requirement as we have done in the past, and that'll be up for city attorney review before we give final approval.
All right. Any questions about that? Well, that's all of our regular agenda. Of course, we'll close with mayor and council comments. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? Everybody comfortable with it? All right. We'll move forward with that agenda at 6:00. Back to our work session agenda. We've got a nuisance property update.
So, council and mayor, Mr. Mott's going to go ahead and pull that up on your screens. But I do want to comment that Thomas Hardy and Engineering Department Code Enforcement have really made a lot of strides. If you recall, maybe three or four years ago, when you charged our staff to figure out a way to help out with dangerous buildings, nuisance properties, we have spent a lot of time updating our code, our zoning, which you have supported throughout that process, to get a path to be able to do something like this. So, I'm really proud of the work that they've done. And I think once you see this and some of the results that we're, we've already had in the short amount of time that that first batch has been, I think since January, you're going to be really proud too. So, that-
Yes, sir. Thank you. Council mayor, I'm very pleased to be here tonight to give you a quick update on the blight elimination program. First of all, I regret that Thomas Hardy's not here because he and his staff, the engineering program, have put in a lot of time and effort on this, and they have a lot of good successes. And I was hoping that he would be able to come here and tell his story to you tonight. However, due to him being out ill, I told him that I'd be glad to take this. I like telling good news. So, be glad to take his story and do my best to tell you the story tonight about where we are. At least, you've asked for quarterly updates. So, this is the end of the first quarter of 2025. So, real quickly, what do I want to go over? We're going to talk a little bit about the elimination program as an overview. We're going to talk about the noxious weeds or noxious and overgrown weeds, dangerous dwellings, the city's demolition initiative, and finally kind of a highlights of what to take away from the program and where we are today. The first thing, the program objective, I thought it's always good to talk about kind of where we're going with the, with the charges. And I put down three of them, to eliminate blight throughout the city. Number two, to comply with all the city codes, ordinances, and laws. And three, to ensure the structures within the city are safe and structurally sound and sanitary. So, we talked about codes and ordinances a little bit. I want to go back. You, you approved or passed ordinance 052124 Delta. There was two of them in that. There was Charlie and Delta. But Delta specifically talked about noxious weeds, and it basically says, in layman's terms, it requires the ownership of, that they keep the weeds down to 12 inches or less, or they'll be abated by public works or by private contractors. Also, the ordinance talks about the abatement of the weeds is benefiting the surrounding community and the entire city. Those are two quick excerpts out of the ordinance that was approved. So, a little bit about noxious and overgrown weeds. I thought pictures would tell you a whole lot more than me talking to you. So, I picked a couple of examples that we've done over this past year and give you a quick update. This is 502 West Park Avenue. Before, this is when we, when we were called into this property and tried to get the property owner to, to bring this back up to 12 inches or less. The second picture is after it was abated, so the noxious weeds were abated. And on all these, I tried to give you kind of a before and after, side-by-side picture, so you can kind of see the same house, same view as much as we could, to show you what it looked like before and after. Now, we'll talk about the benefits of this in a minute, but aesthetically, you can see this is a great improvement. And if you live right next door to this house or this dwelling, I'm sure you would want to see the right picture more than you would want to see the left. Second one I picked for you, excuse me, is 204 West Adam Street. This is a before picture. You can also see the signs. There's two signs posted. That's per the ordinance. We put those signs out, posting the public and the property owners that are there to abate the nuisance, or public works will go in there and abate it for them. So, this is a before picture. This is actually after. So, putting those side-by-side, it's hard to tell that there was even a home at, at that address, but definitely the picture on the right is more aesthetically pleasing.
And that home's slated for demolition, is it not?
I believe it is, sir. So, we talk about what are the benefits for, why do we do this? And what are the benefits for abating overgrown vegetation? And I listed three. There's many of them, but these are some of them. Reducing and shielding the area from criminal activity. As you talk to the police chief and the police department, you know, there's a lot of things that goes on behind those bushes and behind those buildings and behind those areas where it's out of sight, definitely not out of mind for some people. So, reduces those areas for criminal activity. It reduces the risk of fires during, during droughts, or if we ever have a breakout of fire, definitely have the vegetation down, something will definitely help to reduce the risk of fire. And the third one is to reduce the habitat for rodents, snakes, insects, critters, animals. Typically, when you see overgrown sites like that, you know, you'll see anything from cats and kittens to you name it. So, reducing the habitat for all of that. Moving on to dangerous dwellings. So, we talked about, there was two ordinances that y'all adopted. This is the Charlie version, but it declares that all dangerous buildings to be a public nuisance and requires the abatement of such buildings. And it says that these abatements can be in the form of two forms, right? One is demolitions and one is remodeling. So, I gave you an example of each of these to kind of show you what this ordinance has been able to allow us to do. The first one, so before we get into that, what are the benefits for abating dangerous properties? Well, there's three primary reasons why that I've noted. One is for safer community. So, mitigating, you know, the potential for the collapse or fire hazards or criminal hotspots, similar to noxious weeds, but in the structure itself. Second, redevelopment. So, remodeling encourages the private investors to come in and maybe base, goes back into an existing urban area and redevelop that area, whether that be remodeling or actually demolition and rebuilding of a structure. And the third part that Thomas and I wanted to point out was, it does give a way to provide more affordable housing alternatives in the community. So, whether that be rent or own or rent-to-own, it affects all of those markets as well. So, again, a couple of pictures of those. Now, I want to point out two of them to you, one being demolition and one being renovation. 417 Grimes, this is a before picture of the structure that was there that we deemed that was unsafe and needed to be mitigated. And the after picture, after the demolition of the structure and it was taken back down to natural, natural grade and revegetated back. And comparison for, for back and forth, the pictures are not 100% exactly at the same exact spot, but that's the same lot that was there. The second, we talk about remodeling. So, this was a structure at 204 West Park before. Look at the front porch. We deemed this as it needed to be abated, that there was a nuisance there as well. And we were able to remodel that structure. So, taking an existing building and getting it back up to something that would be safe and habitable and meets code. So, a comparison of before and after, not just aesthetically different, but also structurally, by code, different, and something that somebody could inhabit to rent or to own. So, those are two examples for you. One, one is a true demo and one is a renovation. So, so where are we status-wise on nuisance properties and structures? We've gotten 23 properties mitigated so far this year, and that's done by the private owners. That's not what we have done. That's what private owners have done. Of those, 18 are remodeling, so six of those in process. 12 of them have been completed already. So, 18 in remodel, five of those in demo. And we want to point it out to you that this program, while a lot of people focus on the demolition and tearing down of nuisance properties, it's actually had a side benefit, which is to take an existing structure and renovate it and put it back into the market, which again gives you some more affordable housing alternatives and brand-new construction. So, we thought that was a definitely success of the program, and we want to highlight that. Moving on, the demolition program that we're currently under, Phase 1, just wanted to remind you that we've gotten 21, 21 structures approved in that first phase. And currently, the status of that is we're doing the asbestos and lead testing for those buildings. We have to do that by 8M requirements before we go in and do any demolition or tearing down the structures. We have to know what's in there. So, we're completing that process right now. And the next action will be to remove all 21 structures. And we think timeline is somewhere summer of this year. We'll have all 21 of those structures down. Phase 2 of that project, we've identified 31 structures to be entered into the program. And right now, all the owners have been notified to mitigate the nuisance. They have to go through their process, and as you remember, the attorney walked us through that process. I'm not going to go through to belay the points of that, but they have, they have a chance to come here and talk to you and then move forward in the project timeline. We're looking at late 2025 to have those structures down. And after Phase 2, I wanted to point out that 74 nuisance structures should be mitigated on the, on the scope that we're on right now, after Phase 2 is complete. So, a quick highlight of where we are and some things that I thought were noteworthy. You know, you adopted that ordinance 52124 C and D, Charlie and Delta, and those, those are really important because those gave us the teeth that we need to, if we couldn't get the property owners convinced to go do the right thing, it gave us a chance to say, per, per council approval, you give the authority to declare those as nuisance properties. And then, how do we mitigate those risks? So, thank you for giving us that tool. Second, the code enforcement inspection for 2024, I thought that number was, was noteworthy. We did over 1,000, namely 1,366 code enforcement inspections of 2024 were completed. On top of that, we determined that we really didn't have a good piece of software to keep up with that. We were keeping up with Excel spreadsheets and such. But we've got a, it was approved in our last year's budget, and we've got that software installed, and we're initiating that software. The good thing about that software is we're uploading the data into it now, but we can assign a reader account. In other words, any one of you, if you want to log in and say, do we have something at 123 Smith Street, you can log in and see what the, what it is, where we are, what's going on, what the next actions are. It also gives flow charts for our staff to follow, where is it in the process? And ultimately, it's got a customer portal part. So, when we, after we get everything in there, a citizen can actually upload a complaint into the software, and it emails the staff and lets us know that we've got that complaint and how we can follow back up with it. That'll be the last piece of this puzzle down the road, but I look forward to, to getting that piece in place. The initial initiative, the demo initiative has begun and is working. In my opinion, it's working. I wanted to point out that Village Heights Apartments, that's off of Apache Drive, the court did order for the owners to repair the ingress, egress drive of the complex, namely that it was unsafe for vehicles to pass down the main corridor of those structures. So, the court did order them to repair that. That's still in process. And then the last one I want to point out was, we did receive another CBPG demo grant. I believe that's $450,000 in this last demo grant. And that is to, to do what the other ones have done. The last one, we just completed last year, which is to take down or remove abandoned residential dwellings. So, we think that will be another tool that the citizens can take advantage of. If they have a building or structure that needs to be mitigated, this is another tool that they can use to, to get that, that dwelling taken care of. So, those are a quick highlight from the program from this year. And as you can see, we've been really busy the first quarter, and we don't see that letting up for the second quarter. But look forward to giving you a second quarter report, and I'll be glad to answer any questions or have any discussion you'd like to have.
Any questions, Barry, on the blight elimination program?
No, I'd just like to get a copy of that when you get a chance like you always do. Thank you.
Anything else?
So, I got a question about the Village Heights. How long do they have to, per the order to do that, to make those repairs?
Actually, can you answer that question? I can't remember the date.
Sure. Hi, good evening. Right now, the court date is set at the beginning of May, but that court date might be moved, and that's the date that, it's Judge Kelly. So, Judge Kelly has said it's got to get fixed between now and then. And I believe, I would not be surprised if he goes out there and checks it himself knowing Judge Kelly. So, we're thinking we're going to know something at the beginning of May.
And if they refuse to or are unable to complete the repairs?
He can hold them in contempt. That's not very pretty. They could end up with, I mean, he could do anything from fine. He can actually hold them in jail for a few days. He has several different options. And, and I hope Judge Kelly's not watching, but he's very creative, and he does stand by his word. So, if you're seeing this, Judge Kelly, sorry.
I will point out that, you know, the ingress, egress of the roads is just one component with Village Heights. We still have property maintenance issues out there. We still have other things that we're tackling under these other programs for Village Heights to get them up to speed. But I just want to point out that we did get a ruling from the court on at least the ingress and egress of the roadway.
Awesome. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Barry.
Yes, sir.
Next item is an update from Ms. Schwartz on the customer service experience.
Hello.
Hi.
Okay. I had a conversation with Jeremy this afternoon about our current updates on our, on our IT, because really, that's kind of where we're, we're being hung up right now. He gave me a lot of technical terms that I don't totally understand. So, I'm going to put them in layman's terms because I would hate to misuse. Greg, Greg might know what it meant, but the rest of us may not. So, okay, we are in the process of getting Tyler cashiering online. Once we do that, we're going to see a really big difference in the, our interaction with our citizens and customers that come into the city. So, this is going to include things for our business licensing, permitting and inspections, the water utility, resident access, our general receipting into the city. So, that includes sales tax receipting into the city and, and all of that. This update, or once this gets completed, is going to, is going to be a big benefit to our residents. We're going to have real-time updates. So, versus now when somebody pays their water utility bill, if they pay that online or they pay it via the phone, it can take at lea, it's a minimum of 24 hours before our system gets that updated. Sometimes there's delays. So, if you do it on a Friday, it's not going to get updated until Monday or Tuesday because it's a third party and we have to import that. This Tyler cashiering is going to be an integrated module of the system that we already have, so that when the citizens call in and they make a payment over the phone or they do something online, that is going to be an instantaneous update then to their account. So, we don't, you know, if they're, they say, hey, I just called and I made a payment online, there are cashiers, our people that work in the office can't see that until it gets imported and updated into our files. Once this gets completed, it will be, we'll be able to see it immediately. So, I think that's going to be a huge benefit to our customers. It's also going to update our resident access, which is going to be the app and the online portion that they will see. So, that's going to get a facelift and a brand-new look to it. Also, speed up the interactions and the feedback that the customers will get from us. So, right now, everything has been installed. The servers are in. The information is in there. What has not happened is that we still need to go through an, a specific configuration. This is the technical part. So, the configuration of that system to us and exactly how we want everything set up. And there's several steps for that. There's the payments and the resident and utilities access. There's the employee access. And then there's the testing for the payments and the apps. And so, the, the infrastructure is there. We've just got to get with Tyler Technologies, which is the platform, and tie all of those things together. But it is in process. We had contact with them in February, and they gave us a two-to-six-week timeline where they would be back with us to, to get some of these things rolling on the integration. And we're probably sitting at about week four of that six-week timeline. I did have some communication with them today. So, we are making some progress towards that, but I'm very excited about it. I think this is going to look really nice, and I think it's going to make communications with our citizens and the ease of updates to their billing and their water bills and all of that. I think it's going to be great. And it is going, it's going to help out all of them because it does include, again, business licenses, permitting. All of those areas will be, will benefit from this. They should, yes, we, we will be able to do that. The business, oh, sorry, you probably can't hear.
What did you ask?
Business licensing online. Yes, yes.
And building permits, just, just about everything that you would come into City Hall for? We should be able to get that stuff online.
Yes, yes. But I do also want to say too, I mean, these are the technological improvements, but also, you know, we're really close on our City Hall renovations. And once the City Hall renovations have, are completed, we did, we were very purposeful in how we designed our placement of these departments. And the revenue department, which handles the business licenses, the water department, and then engineering, who handles the permitting and building and code, are all going to be right next to each other on the main floor of City Hall. And so, I think, again, from a customer experience standpoint, yes, we're working on the technology, but I, we're also trying to make it easier for your in-person experience so that if you come in for, for a building permit, or if you are starting a business and they say, hey, we also need to get water started, those departments are going to be right next to each other. So, the, the flow or the process that you go through to get those things done will hopefully be much smoother to, to the customer.
And we're still looking at probably May for?
May, middle, middle of May? May 9th?
May 9th.
Yes.
Awesome. Any, any other questions from Leanne on the, our customer experience? Thank you for that update. All right, next item on our work session agenda is our, it's not our Q2 goals- All right, next item on our work session agenda is our, it's not our Q2 goal setting, it's to schedule our Q2 goal setting. So is everybody good coming in at four o'clock on April 1st? That's what we've been doing, is coming in an hour early the first of every quarter. Everybody wants to check their calendar?
At four?
Four o'clock, yeah, instead of five.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Might as well change my. Jonathan, we've also got a economic development issue to, to address too, right?
Economic development and real estate? Yes, sir.
So we'll have a, um, an executive session to discuss that opportunity, but we can get all that in and, and review our agenda in the two-hour period, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, sounds good. Does anybody have any, did you have something else, Sean?
I did, I just wanted to call attention, I sent an email earlier, but there is something in your packet, email from Barry Mott, and also an agreement for professional services. And if you have time and would like me to talk about that in a little bit of detail, I'd be happy.
Yeah, we've got about 10 minutes, so.
Won't take that long. But, so one of the, one of the things on our strategic planning that we've, we've talked about in the past is, you know, finishing out the four lane of Bowieville Circle. Some of the advantages there include dissipation of traffic from some of our high-traffic areas, as well as encouraging that traffic to go on the, the southern and western edge of town and encourage development. With that, Aldot actually owns the right-of-way. They've already acquired that along that almost three-and-a-half mile stretch. And so we, we have met with an engineering firm to kind of give an estimate on what that might cost. We've also had some conversations, the mayor and I have with, with Aldot, and we believe that if, if and when funding becomes available, either from Aldot or our federal government, that it would be prudent to have a set of engineering plans for that done. And so that, that would be permitted by Aldot, but the ci, at the city's expense. That will take somewhere between 18 and 24 months. We believe it's closer to 18 months, but from the time that we, we get those set of plans, we, we now have a shovel-ready project. So until we do that, we're always going to be 18 to 24 months away from actually proceeding with that, which in many instances is a hindrance to us pursuing grants or other funding mechanisms, because they're looking for a shovel-ready project. So what you have there is sort of a detailed of, of the agreement and, and funding and what that might cost, and, you know, we can certainly, not asking for a vote or anything, but I wanted you to be educated about that, to see where the council might stand, to see if that's something you would like us to put on a future council agenda for consideration.
Well, I'm, I'm certainly good with it. I think it fits right in line with our, with our long-term plans. It's something we've discussed at length in our, in our planning sessions. Anybody else have any thoughts?
No, let's do it.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Yeah, I mean, to your point, if we're 18 to 24 months to be in shovel-ready, we may be an eternity away from actually getting it done if we never take that next step.
Yes, sir. And, and this, this does fit with, like I said, your strategic plan and, and goals for the city. It certainly helps out with the connectivity in, in discussions with Aldot and Barry Mott. Certainly there's a case to be made that, that would suggest that this would drive traffic to the areas from an economic development standpoint that we're talking about, trying to build up Southern Bypass, downtown and Rucker Boulevard. We're, we're trying to have connectivity throughout the city and steer traffic, you know, where we don't, where it doesn't feel like a big city. And, and I know I've heard from people that live here, including some of you, that certain times of day, it certainly feels that way along our high-traffic corridors on the northern and eastern side of the bypass.
Yep. Sounds like we've at least got consensus to, to move forward with, with pursuing it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else for the work session? All right, we'll stand adjourned for about 14 minutes. We'll re-convene at six o'clock in our regular meeting. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I've got six o'clock. I will call this meeting of the Enterprise City Council to order. Let the record show that all members of the council are present. If you would, please stand with me for the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. We've got Reverend Willie White from John's Chapel AME Church that's going to lead us in our opening prayer. We've got Reverend Willie White from John's Chapel AME Church that's going to lead us in our opening prayer.
Ladies and gentlemen, first of all, I want to thank you for this opportunity to come to me. We thank you, darling, for this opportunity to be able to serve our community. My God, we just pray to God for each vision, pray to God for guidance, pray to God for your wisdom to me, amen. My God, we pray to God for prosperity, peace, and integrity as our foundation, and Jesus can we pray, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the voice of standing, the one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Counsel, you should have the agenda that we discussed in the work session just prior to this meeting in your packet. I will call for a motion to approve the agenda of the meeting as submitted.
I move to approve the agenda of the meeting as submitted.
Second. With a motion and second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will now consider the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the council for review or considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the city council with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on an item, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request of a member of the city council. I now call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
With a motion and second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We now have mayoral recognition of Enterprise City Schools All-State Band. I'll call upon Mayor Cooper who will present certificates to the Enterprise City Schools All-State Band students and directors in recognition of their selection to participate in the 2025 Alabama All-State Band.
First, I would like to say good evening to everyone. Tonight, I would like to recognize our talented band students who were selected to participate in the District Honor Band and All-State Band. As a former band director, I can tell you that being selected to these prestigious ensembles is no small feat. This speaks volumes about our dedication, skill, and passion for music. At this time, I would like to call up Blake Moore, Director of Community Service in recognition to help me with this presentation. Also, I would like to say that once a musician, always a musician. And I would like to also point out, because we have three directors here, but it's one that's special to me is Mr. Shawn Wilder. He was one of my former students over at Coppinville School. So I'm sure he'll have some remarks afterwards.
Thank you, Mayor Cooper. Being chosen for either band is a testament to the countless hours of practice, perseverance, and commitment these students have put into their craft. Thirty-six students were selected to the District Eight Honor Band, and of those thirty-six, twenty-four were selected to the Alabama All-State Band. And as I call your name, please come forward to receive your certification certificate from Mayor Cooper. And some students were not able to attend tonight. The first one who is not in attendance is Liam Bundrick. We have Charlotte Kramer. Darian Cooper. Maisy Irvin. Evan Fink. David Gasper Wong. Manuela Gasper Wong. Christine Ho. Jessica Ho. Austin Holmes. Ethan Ingram. Natalie Jones. Samantha Kelly could not be here with us tonight. Rihanna Lavoy. Chan Wook Lee. Bella Moreland. Lila Knox. Giovanni Miller. Theodore Rogers. Jace Cersey. John Cole Cersey. Sidney Smith. Another one who could not be here tonight with us is Jomar Velasquez. Bethany Wumble. Band Director Adam Brumberg. Band Director Bobby Williams. And the pride of the Big Blue Marching Band, Director of Bands, Mr. Shawn Wyler. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give each one of these students a round of applause and the directors.
Thank you, Mayor, and certainly congratulations to everyone who was recognized this evening. Well deserved. I have never seen us lose a band competition on Friday night. We are always the best band in the building. All right, moving on. Our next item is a request to address council regarding a street closure request from Warren Byron of the Special Olympics Torch Run. Mr. Byron actually addressed us in the work session just prior, so we've already heard from him and from the chief, gave his endorsement. So I will entertain a motion to approve the permit request as submitted.
I move to approve the permit request as submitted.
Second.
With a motion and a second to approve the permit request as submitted, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I want to have privilege of the floor. This is this part of the meeting where anyone in attendance tonight who wishes to address the council may do so for three minutes. If there is a public hearing on the agenda for the topic you are concerned with, please wait until that public hearing opens to address the council. If they choose, staff, mayor, and council will respond to your comments during the appointed times later in the meeting. Repetitive, disruptive, and disparaging comments will not be tolerated. If you are found out of order, your privileges can and will be revoked. Does anyone wish to address the council at this time? I see no one, so we'll move on to staff reports. Are there any staff reports that were unable to be given in the work session? I see none. We will move to old business. It's to review and consider a bid recommendation for the FY25 resurfacing improvements for Phase Five. I introduce and call for consideration of a recommendation from Consulting Engineer Glenn Morgan to award the bid for FY25 resurfacing improvements Phase Five to Southeast Construction Company for the base bid plus additive alternates one, two, and three in the total amount of $1,267,589. Other bids received are as follows. Wiregrass Construction, $1,326,522. And APAC Alabama Incorporated for $1,546,201. Do you hear a motion?
Move to award the bid for FY25 resurfacing improvements Phase Five to Southeast Construction Company in the amount of $1,267,589.
Second.
With a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We now move to new business. Introduce Planning Commission recommendation. I introduce for the record a recommendation from the Enterprise Planning Commission to approve the following requests for the rezoning of property, which is a request by North Star Engineering Services on behalf of Richard Bray to rezone 3.59 acres of land from M2 General Industrial District to R1 Low Density Single Family Residential District located on Coppinville Road. Next item is to introduce ordinance 031825, which is the Bray Rezone. I introduce ordinance 031825, providing for the rezoning of 3.59 acres of land owned by Richard Bray from M2 General Industrial District to R1 Low Density Single Family Residential District located on Coppinville Road. There will be a public hearing to be held at the regular meeting scheduled for April 15, 2025. No action this evening. I'll now introduce ordinance 031825A Personnel Rules and Regulations. I introduce ordinance 031825A, providing to repeal ordinance 101601 as amended and to adopt rules and regulations governing personnel actions and establish the procedures for the administration of the same. We'll lay that over to consider at the next meeting. We'll now consider authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with All-In Credit Union Car Sale. I call for a motion to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement on behalf of the City of Enterprise with All-In Credit Union to hold their annual car sale on April 24 through 26, 2025 on the grounds next to Enterprise Civic Center. Do you hear a motion?
Move to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement as submitted.
Second.
With a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement as submitted, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We now consider authorizing the police chief to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Flock Group Incorporated. I call for a motion to authorize the police chief to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Enterprise Police Department and Flock Group Incorporated on behalf of the Enterprise Housing Authority. Do you hear a motion?
I move to authorize the police chief to execute the memorandum of understanding as submitted.
Second.
With a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We now review and consider a proposal recommendation from the ETC Institute regarding a community survey. I introduce and call for the consideration of a recommendation from Public Information Manager Emily Glasscock to accept the proposal from ETC Institute for Services Related to conducting a community survey on behalf of the City of Enterprise at a cost of $18,000. Do you hear a motion?
I move to accept the proposal from ETC Institute as submitted.
Second.
With a motion and a second to accept the proposal, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We now consider a request of permission to seek bids for the equipment and labor for pedestrian crosswalks. I introduce and call for consideration of a request from City Engineer, Public Works Director Barry Mott to seek bids for the equipment and labor to install multiple pedestrian crossing buttons and crosswalk markings along various points on Main Street. Funding for the project is through a grant secured by Main Street Enterprise. Do you hear a motion?
Move to approve the request to seek bids as submitted.
Second.
With a motion and a second to approve the request to seek bids, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will now review and consider a streetlight request. I introduce and call for consideration of a request from Thomas Hardy, Assistant Director of Engineering, to install the following streetlights. One 101-watt LED fixture at 3544 Ozark Highway at an annual cost of $240.24 and one 211-watt LED fixture at the corner of West Brunson Street and North Main Street at an annual cost of $330.60. Do you hear a motion?
Move to approve the streetlighting request as submitted.
Second.
With a motion and a second to approve the streetlighting request as submitted, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll now consider a request to hold the EAA Young Eagle Flight Rally. I introduce and call for consideration of a request from City Engineer, Public Works Director Barry Mott on behalf of EAA Chapter 351 to hold a Young Eagle Flight Rally at the Enterprise Municipal Airport on Saturday, April 26, 2025, contingent upon the submittal of the required insurance certificate before the event and reviewed by the city attorney. Do you hear a motion?
I move to approve the request contingent upon insurance verification and review by the city attorney before the event.
Second.
With a motion and a second to approve the request, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mayor, do you have a report for us?
I'd like to remind our citizens to follow our city page for updates during severe weather. Also, follow Coffey County EMA and Wiregrass 211 for updated information. Unfortunately, there was a lot of misinformation shared during the storm. Please note that the city staff are working with local entities to work on ways to better serve information and resources available to our community. We want our citizens to be safe and encourage everyone to be only to rely on credible sources of information. For those looking to get involved, I encourage you to contact your local churches, the Christian Mission, Mission, and Coffey County Community Emergency Response Team. Volunteers are always needed to help, and this is a great way for our citizens to get involved. Before the storm moved through, we had some great events happening in Enterprise. Thank you to everyone who participated in Oscar Club Day of Service. We have so many volunteers who participate in service projects throughout the city. I also saw many of you downtown on the Saint Patrick's Day Parade and Run. What a great turnout. Special thanks to the Enterprise Chamber and their staff for coordinating that event. Speaking of events, Easter at the Market is coming up on April fifth. Spring Showcase at the Monument is April twelfth, and of course, Festival in the Park is set for May third. We have many exciting events coming up. There are ways for you and your businesses to get involved, whether through sponsorship or volunteer opportunities. It is all pitch it and support our community and continue to work enterprise, make Enterprise a great place to live, work, and worship, and play. Again, I would like to also congratulate the Enterprise High School Band for their participation in the state contest, realizing the fact that there are six to seven counties, and in those six to seven counties, you have many bands, and the competition is great. Of course, you know, being a part of the band is just like being a part of the football team, is discipline, and you have to work together in unity. So again, from past experience, I feel like that we should always congratulate our children, whether they are playing sports, whether it's core music, or whether they are in the band or whatever it might be, because one thing, that is the future of tomorrow. Don't forget, you can find more and more information about our city news and events on our Facebook page and our website, enterpriseal.gov. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Rich?
Good evening to everyone. Certainly ditto Mayor's comments, want to congratulate the All-State Band members, and just thank our staff for that nuisance property update. I get excited every time we get those. I've driven and looked at every one of those properties, and it's a major difference, so I'm looking forward to that continued effort, and you all have a good night.
Mr. Griesman?
I would like to congratulate the Oscar Club also. Mayor Cooper mentioned that, but Saturday they had a day of service. It, I understand they had a tremendous crowd. There was people from all different groups, churches, individuals who participated, and it made a big difference in our city. So thank you very much.
Mr. Page?
I'd also like to congratulate the band as a former band member of the Enterprise High School Big Blue Band. I'm always excited to see our band continuing to excel. I was had a lot of fun being in the band, and I love watching it and hearing it, and congratulations to those that made it to that All-State Band program. I'm also excited to see our continual moving forward with our goals, such as, as Ms. Rich just mentioned, the blighteded properties and moving forward with that, as well as repaving the streets. We've had a goal of continually keeping or repaving project going so we hopefully never get behind again the way we were, and I'm excited to see that continuing on even this year. Have a good night.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you to all our folks out here, same ones we see all the time. Thank you for coming and being part of your city government, and thank you to everyone that's watching online. Mr. Mayor, I say thank you for giving a shout-out for our Community Emergency Response Team, and in fact, our next class is May sixteenth, seventeenth, and the twenty-fourth. I need ten folks. So far, I've got eight. Please join us. My phone number's on the city site. Call Ms. Emily Glasscock down at the city, she's got my number too, but we'll help you get ready for the next storm. It's not if, but when, and you'll feel more confident in your abilities to take care of your family and to join as volunteers is what we need for around the city when we have to open up a shelter. So thank you so very much. Honor Band, that was great. I was also not in the Big Blue Band, but I was a drummer, I was trying to figure out who was the drummer there, but it's great to see young kids with the arts. So thank you very much, good night, and God bless.
Yeah, ditto what everybody says, certainly. Thank you, Barry and Thomas, I know Thomas wasn't here tonight, but I'm with Sonya there, I get excited every time, every time, because, you know, I think all of us understand how far we've come from frustration to now actually seeing things done, and I'm actually seeing things, I think some of our citizens are taking some things under their own hands now, I'm seeing some properties that have just been kind of on that border of being aggravating, they're starting to fix them up now because they don't want to be next, I think, so it's good to see people doing that, and certainly congratulations to the band. I'm just, I've got three kids, I don't know how Mr. Wyler gets three hundred of them to march like that, because I can't even get them to church on time, so, but anyways, it's just always impressive on Friday nights to see what, see what they put on the field. But we will stand adjourned until Tuesday, April first, at four o'clock. The agenda says five o'clock, but we'll be meeting at four o'clock in work session followed by our regular meeting at six o'clock. See you then.